I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everybody. Welcome to our November 6 meeting. We'll start off with the public hearing, local establishing the expansion of residency requirement for the position of village historian in the village of Washingtonville. Have a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? One in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. So, the public hearing is basically to expand the borders of anyone who would be interested in becoming the village historian. We have been canvassing within our borders of the village, two and a half square miles, for several months, and we haven't had any particular takers on the job. So, there, by law, we can expand the borders, and we're in, and obviously this is the process to do it. And this is a public hearing. If you have any questions on that process. So, we'll open it to the floor. If anybody has any questions, please just state your name, address, and your comment. Yes?
Hi, Patricia Cundy. What else did you want to say?
Address.
Address?
Washingtonville, New York.
Great.
My question is, if you're expanding it, could you expand it to an existing historian in another area?
Well, pretty much that's what we're doing. We've expanded it, and I'm sorry for not mentioning it, but we did expand it to the boundaries of the village of Washingtonville. I'm sorry, town of Blooming Grove.
Blooming Grove, okay.
Yes, so that's encompassing all of us at the moment. And there was one person who was showing interest, and she said if this goes through that she would be interested in taking the position. So, we'll let you know when all that comes out.
And if somebody who does have a past being a historian?
Yeah.
Now, when you say historian, excuse me, is it someone who's an official historian? Or could it be someone who's lived here like a long time?
Okay, so, Tom, if I can enumerate them?
Sure.
New York State in itself does not have a designation as historian. It really can be any resident who has taken an interest in local history, in the interest of preservation. There are conferences that have to be attended, and there are requirements within each municipality on the storage of historical records. So, it would be the historian's job to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you very much. Thanks, Susan. Are there any other questions or comments on that? If not, are there any comments from the board?
No.
Okay. Would that have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second? Okay, Tom. Vernon? Any questions or comments on that? One in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay. Next is public comment for any subject matter you're interested in. Again, just name, address, and your comments, questions. Anybody? Yes? Want to come to the front row?
Want a mic pack?
I had a friend in the back.
You want a microphone?
No, no.
We were choosing.
Thank you for your patience.
I don't hear well, so if it helps me, if you're closer.
No, that's okay. What I wanted to ask about is the survey. I just read the email from Donna about it, and there was a question about addresses and stuff like that, getting them out to the proper addresses. Could you tell me how that's going?
Okay.
Sure.
I actually just finally got in touch. I contacted the post office a week ago or so after we had the dialogue, because I know a lot of residents did not receive that resident letter, and that is of a concern. And the survey was in the resident letter. So, we use our water sewer billing for our mass mailing. And a lot of residents are excluded from that, because if you are renting or if you live in a certain area in our village, you're not receiving that mail. The owner is. So, when I contacted the post office, I asked if they could generate to us a mass mailing list of every resident within the village. And just today, I heard back from them. They did send it over.
Wow.
However, it's by zone. We're going to have to go through it. It's going to take some time, because apparently there are many 10992 addresses that are not within the village. Right. And, you know, there's six different mailing zones. They're not, it's not like number five or number six is all outside of the village.
Right.
So, we'll have to go through it, but we do have the list. And at some point, you know, we can start maybe generating.
Is there a timeframe for the survey to begin?
There is, and it is Thanksgiving. And because of that, as you saw, if you're on the comp committee, an email went out from myself today regarding how to now get the word out even further than we did, because not every resident received it. You know, and then we have the senior population, and then we have the high schoolers. So, they are of age and able to participate. But the issue there is, we cannot police the high school and have the teachers policing who's taking the survey. However, so in other words, if you scan that barcode?
Right, right.
You know, it's going to bring you right to the survey, and the very first question is, are you a resident in the village? So, as long as people are honest about it, we can then screen from the survey. We can't screen, anybody could, anywhere could come and scan that QR code, right? But we can screen as long as folks are being honest about where they live. And that, again, that's just a mini survey. That's what's being used to then generate a larger survey, the more detailed survey of what people really want to see, you know, in the near future for this village. That said, we're also holding a public hearing. We're also holding a workshop. So, there are many, many opportunities, and we welcome you all to come to every comp meeting for Thursday of every month. We're back halfway through the process right now and on schedule. So, did that answer your question?
It did, it did. I also have a list of the people on both sides if you want them.
So, I do have that now?
They don't get water bill.
Right.
They don't get water bill.
Right, but they are res, but the...
They don't rent either.
No, I understand, but there's still an address in the village. So, if they get mail, they'll be on that list that I received today.
On the one you received.
Yes, that's why I remember I said to you?
Yes.
When you were, the other day, right, hold the list?
I remember.
Right. So, no, I'm glad that you have it, if you need it. But in the meantime now, we should have this official list for the post office. We do have it. It's just a matter of mail loss.
We need to sort it by the streets that we know are mostly renters or potential people that obviously live there but might not own a home or something to that effect.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds like a very dubious amount of work before Thanksgiving.
Well, we're, you know what? Also, everyone received that letter. Hopefully, maybe they hold on to it. The postcard was inside the resident letter. And tomorrow, if I can get the verbiage ready, you're going to send out a CTI? Robo, AKA RoboPaul?
Yeah.
Regarding it, because it is due, and we're closing it on Thanksgiving.
Okay.
I urge everybody to, you know, try to fill it out, remind them, because the response has been medium to low, which is usually, I want to say, not unexpected, because people just sometimes either are way too busy, they just can't seem to find the time for a few minutes just to, just to fill it out. But it's important, again, because it's, you know, the future of our village, looking at the next, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years. And it would be wonderful to have people's input, because this is where you live. You moved here for a reason. So, you know, put that down, you know?
We have about 6,000 residents in the village. As of a couple of days ago, when I last spoke to the planner, they received 75 responses. There wasn't one in the box here. We have hard copies also. If anybody wanted to come in and actually just fill it out rather than scanning.
I should do that, because I never got one.
Yeah, we have hard copies with a box.
I stopped the envelope.
Right on the counter.
Didn't take my moment.
Also, the library has hard copies.
Yeah.
Right.
So, we were doing everything that we could do.
Any, yes?
Mike, President, on Free Lawn Street. I want to thank you guys for getting those trash cylinders out. One over by Stop &amp; Shop, and the other one. With that said, when I walk on the other... When I walk up North Street, I pick up the garbage, and I drop it in that cylinder that's over there on Ahern. When I walk down by the Stop &amp; Shop, it's not a problem to walk across the street and put it in the trash cylinder that they put out there.
Yeah.
But I think a better location would be on the Stop &amp; Shop side, because a lot of people walk to Stop &amp; Shop, and they drop garbage along there. I don't think you just put on the other side, it's by the crosswalk.
Yeah, right.
But I think moving on the other side, I think it's, I think it would be used more often.
Okay.
I think, in my opinion.
Well, that's actually private property. I would mean private. So, we could reach out to the property management company, let them know that's what we'd like to do, just to kind of ask their permission. And really shouldn't have much of a problem with that, I wouldn't think.
I can't see Jeff saying no to that. We're willing to.
Pretty simple thing.
I'm a little crazy about trash around. I just, just love to see trash on the ground and stuff.
Yeah.
So, I pick it up, but, you know, maybe next year, when our situation's better, we could buy more cylinders and put them around, trash containers, and put them around.
To make you better sanitation.
I'd love to do that.
Just be prepared come March.
Okay. All right. I'll, I'll answer him once a week.
This is recorded, man.
We have you committed.
Do you need seasonal water?
Yes.
Thanks, Michael. Are you had that, Christina?
I have, I've got it. Well, I personally have to tell you that the...
I have just your name and address, I'm sorry.
Pat Mitchell, at 10 York Place, Washingtonville. So, I have to personally tell you that I do not, even as the Washingtonville postal office for quite some time, they have lost on me all my clients' Christmas gifts, all my certified mail that would have to go down to the old department in New York City. I have my mother's estate to settle, and it's been four years, and I have to do documents constantly to four different courts all of the time, because she's going to bounce. But there's been, most of the mail just not get there, so I don't go there anymore. I go over Blooming Grove, and Pete and Eric over there are wonderful. Everything gets delivered. I can't go here, and I don't care. I'm, I'm going. I have to deliver.
Well, that's definitely your option? I mean, but that they are our post office?
I know. If they don't care. I mean, recently, they did a change of moving people around, but right before that time, not good. I couldn't take a chance.
Okay, that's bad.
I had deadlines.
Right. Thank you, Ben. Any other comments, questions? Okay, then we'll move on to announcements. Just a note, reminding everybody that tomorrow is election day. So, you know, you're going to be voting for town-level appointments, elections. So, it'll be your normal area where you normally would be voting. And I would assume if you have any questions or questions on that, I would reach out to the Orange County Electoral Board of Elections, Gotion. Just Google it, and you could figure out exactly where you'd be voting. Let's see. Also, for VFW, we have Veterans Day coming up on the 11th. There will be a ceremony at the VFW Memorial at West 29, or 29 West Main Street. There is be a ceremony there at 11 o'clock, some presentation and a few speeches. And then back at the VFW right on Main Street will be coffee and refreshments, coffee and cake, if anybody would like to attend that. And I really urge everybody to try to do that, because we have a small vet group. They're very, very dedicated, and if anybody has family that are vets, you know, both living and gone, just, you know, remember them. Take a minute, thank them. And please, if you can, you know, it shows great support, and they love it to see them on Saturday at 11 o'clock. Thank you. Okay, so moving right into discussions, we have water sewer billing updates. For Susan to get an update on that?
So, a new billing cycle has gone out. We anticipate a lot of phone calls as usual because of irregularities in the system. We are actually, at this point, to be quite honest, looking at possibly replacing all the meters and getting a better system installed within the village. Right now, we have 1,906 accounts. There are 15 different routes. A route is anywhere from 78 to 142 houses. Of those routes, every route has anywhere from a minimum 10 to 25 meters that need to be replaced because of deferred maintenance. We are losing, at this point, about 35% of our water usage is not getting paid because of inaccurate meters. And the amount they need to be changed is probably in the number of 400. Initially, we thought it was going to be 250 to 300. It's probably about 400 meters out there that need changing. One of the problems that we have, though, is there is no language in our local law that we can force a homeowner to let us in and change that meter. There's no language that, that gives it any teeth. So, we will be looking at some local laws to change some of the things in the system to make sure that the water system is funded correctly, and that we have the right to service our equipment. We're looking at possibly implementing heavy fines on people who do not respond to written notification that we need to access their property. We're looking at incurring fines for people who do not maintain their household water lines for us to be able to change our equipment. The homeowner is responsible for the valves before the water meter and the valve after the water meter. So, when we go in to change or service a meter, we can shut off the service without having water going all over the place. There's a situation right now where somebody is refusing to service their valves because they know when their meter gets changed, their water usage is going to be higher. It's not fair to the rest of the residents of this village to operate like that. It's also the, the condition of the main shut-off valve. That main shut-off valve is on somebody's private property. We cannot service it. We will shut it off if it's an emergency, but at the end of the day, that valve fails. It's the homeowner's property. We have to have stronger language that indicates that that is their responsibility, and the burden cannot fall on all the taxpayers to service an individual's property. So, we're going to be looking forward in the next three months on changing some of these local laws, so that cost is buried where it's supposed to be and not on the entire residence, if that makes sense.
This also includes, and more so for commercial properties. We run into continuously, time and time, that we link an appointment with a commercial piece of property, and then all of a sudden, three, four appointments go by, it's no-shows. And, you know, it's our time, it's our resources. We're wasting money putting two or three guys in a building trying to change something, and then the business management company, per se, doesn't show up. So, really, it's more probably driven for that type of a situation. We're not, we're not thinking of shutting anybody's water off. It's just a matter of letting us do what needs to be done in coordination with the residents who live there. Because it's, it's frustrating when we're trying to knock off issues on our list, and it just seems to be a, a cycle of, yeah, we made the phone calls, we did hear back. Oh, they canceled. We're back at this again. So, we need to be, you know, as Susan is indicating, a little bit more aggressive so that we can take care of these meters when they are broken. And to her point also, we talked to one company to, that would basically replace the soft, replace all the meters. It would also include a new software program. And it would be all automated, to the point, one company is basically a device inside a car or truck. You ride down the road, it collects the data. You're basically doing everything in one day. The other company we're going to be talking to is a cellular company. And that basically will just ping off a cellular, cellular tower and give us the data. So, we don't even really even have to go out of the building. All we have to do is hit a couple of keystrokes, and we start collecting the data. Because the operations right now is we send five to 10 guys out, try to camp the entire village by foot with a book, with a pen, trying to analyze these things, bring it back.
Manual data entry.
Manual data entry back into the system. So, that whole process is almost three and a half weeks to potentially even a month, you know, depending weather related and other things. So, it is a huge hindrance on us being able to do our jobs, especially when it's, you know, DPW, you know, we lose two weeks. That's huge for us to, you know, just stop everything and let's go read meters. It, it's a huge impact. So, once we have, you know, all the information, we have a demo coming up next week. I think there's really only two major manufacturers, so we're going to hit both of those. If there's a third one, we're obviously pursue it, and we'll probably bring them in for demos, so everybody can at least listen to what they have to say. And we'll pursue it and see what it says. Because the last time we analyzed this in 2014, 2015, I made a presentation from the company. System is, it's not cheap at the end of the day. But for the amount of water that we're, we're losing, the system could be paid off within four years. And then, once we actually know the actual readings, then we can make water adjustments from there. Because we don't want to overcharge you guys. But right now, we're, what goes out of the wells and what goes into the sewer plant, there's this much of a variation, and it's not being billed for.
35 to 42%.
So, it's, it's a thousand, hundreds of thousands of gallons of water. So, question?
Yes, my question was, when you're changing these meters, do the people get charged for the changing of the meters?
No.
No, there's no language in there for that.
For that?
No.
And also, the idea of finding them, I think, is a very good idea, especially at the three or four times, trying to... Is that something you can implement now, or do you have to look at legality?
We have to go through a public hearing and everything. It has to be local law, because it has to match our code. The code right now, it's my understanding, the way it's written, is that a new construction has to buy a meter. That's part of the building process. They pay for a water meter. The meter is the property, however, of the village. There's no language in there covering existing meters.
Oh, so...
Yeah, I mean, there are other little things that we need to add in there. Just an example that I, I've discussed with Tom is that when somebody moves out, we have to send somebody out to do a final reading. And we've changed the procedure where it has to be inside the house, because we need to know that the new person coming in is going to have the most accurate.
Right.
Well, that's time and talent and a body. Right now, there's nothing in our system that allows us to charge for that. We need to be able to charge.
Absolutely.
Because we're sending a body. That body has to get paid. It's time on task.
And does the, the, the idea of penalizing it, is it different for commercial than for private?
Well, that's all that...
How would that be determined?
That's all that's going to have to be created in the, in the local law, because the commercial meters start at $2,000 and up.
Yeah.
And that's probably old pricing.
And the gallonages that they're using are tenfold, 15, 20-fold, what a normal resident would use. You know, for the resident, we just, please just give us access. For the commercial properties, it's a big, big expense that's being lost. And we need more teeth on that end of the spectrum so that we can get in there, do our job, or otherwise, they're going to feel a pinch of some type of a fine, so we can get in there.
Yeah.
We're not trying to be unreasonable. Work with us, you know? But when you're constantly turned around and, and, you know, almost like hanging up the phone on you, your hands are tied, and we have to take some action, because it's, it's... We talk about it every week.
We had a...
At our department managers' meeting, it just goes on and on and on. It's like, how the heck are we going to stop this?
We had a commercial property that four appointments were made for access to read. Three were canceled. The last one was a no-show. When we reached out for an explanation, our phone calls were not returned.
Michael.
I'm sorry. I'm just giving you the reality of what happened.
Mike, President, on Free Lawn Street. Tom, are you guys like looking at other communities around, like Chester, Blueberg, to see what water meters they have in their system, whether or not they're automated, and what's the history on it? Is, you know, are they very effective?
Yes.
Have you done any, any...
Oh, yeah.
We've done Midtown, Gotion. Everybody is going, most of the newer ones that are out there is cellular. And...
Montgomery's not bad.
When I talk to those guys, they even, when I talk to Gotion back in probably 14, 15, they were just installing the system. They had maybe half of it done. They made a decision to do it themselves. But they're a lot larger from a DPW and water and sewer department. So, they potentially had the manpower, but it was a struggle for them as well, because, again, trying to get into the homes. But the treasurer and the clerk told me that the revenue that they've received was thousands and thousands of dollars more than what they've been collecting, because now they had accurate meters. And that's, I think, where the point is, is that, you know, we're going to feel a little pinch. We'll all feel that pinch when we're installing them. But once we get to that level, then we can even look at the rates and say, you know, we can drop the rates now, because now everything is reading accurately.
No promise of that drop.
You know?
That was...
But I'm just saying, it makes sense. I, I've said this since '14. And, and, and why not? I mean...
Have you checked with anybody lately? In other words, like you checked with Gotion in '14, there's new technology. I mean, maybe the latest technology. I'm just saying, somebody that's actually using the system that really is working well?
Middletown switched a couple of years ago. They recouped their expense in two years.
Okay.
Wow.
They even send out letters saying that they can tell if there's a leak in the house, because they can see water constantly running.
You get that on your phone?
And they don't allow the office to do it.
You go on vacation, you set it for 10 gallons.
So, you look at the one that...
All of a sudden, your, your phone alert goes off that, you know, you used 25 gallons.
So, you're looking at the one that the Middletown has, then?
Yeah, well, that's what we're looking at. We're looking at, there's two systems. One from a Badger and Census. One has basically the drive-by. You get in the truck, you've got a computer. The other one is basically a device that's on the outside of the house, or potentially could even be in the basement, but it reads the signals off of cell towers. And that, that, that's up to me. It's a home run, because that's instantaneous.
Yeah.
We don't have to have, I mean, we could even ask the police department to put laptops, you know, somewhere in the car, put them in their trunk. They could write, as they're doing their patrol, you know, technically, they could, they could do the water meetings in a day.
Now, O and R has smart meters, and they have antennas out on the poles.
Yeah.
Is there a way that it can be something?
We'd have to lease their antennas.
No, I, I mean, I'm assuming what's on those towers or what's on the telephone poles is proprietary to Orange and Rockland. I don't think they're going to allow us to...
Piggyback.
You know, use that antenna, or if we needed access to permits for running wire, we'd have to do the permit process. We're waiting for a couple of data lines to come in for this building and update the sewer plant and the, and the DPW buildings. We've been waiting four months for permits to be approved from O and R. And once the company gets that approval, then they'll install the data lines, but they have to have approval before they can touch the telephone poles. But if it's cellular, Monell has a tower. I mean, wherever, whatever it reaches, whatever it's pinging off of, will, will grab the data and, and send it to us. Yeah? So, you had a question, sir?
Yeah, hi. My name is William Graves. I live on Washington Boulevard. This is more of an ignorance question. There's two meters in my house. One is outside and one is inside.
No, no, no. There's one, some meter and the other.
You have a light box outside, right?
There's a meter inside connected to the pipe coming in off the street that runs through. And then outside, there's a little, another little analog, I don't know.
Little box.
Little box.
There's a light box, right?
It's, I think it's probably painted over white if that... It's, I think it's probably painted over white if that's an empty number. But are you saying that somebody's been visually reading that on a board basis?
Yes.
They have a specific wand that is for that equipment and they go by with that wand and it reads it if it's working correctly. And they write that down from there into a book. So there's a.
Wait, I'm sorry, they're wanding it, but then writing it down?
It's a special wand, they call it a wand, but it's a special reader for that little radio relay.
Okay.
There should be three wires coming through your, your property.
Yeah, I don't know if there are wires, but.
That goes into the top of that meter.
Okay, and they're coming onto the property to do that or they're coming?
They should be, yes.
Cause I've never seen anybody do it. But I'm not playing by word, my word bills are fine.
You need a ring.
I have a ring, but the ring faces.
Oh, the other way.
Yeah.
I will tell you though, if there's a locked gate or a dog outside, and this is another way we're losing out on accurate readings, it's because if it's a locked gate, they can't open a lock gate. Now they're trespassing. If there's a dog in the yard, hello?
They won't enter an area if there's animals, for obviously reasons, right?
No, this is dead front on the house.
Right.
Right into the front door, but I just, I've never seen anybody come by.
And those boxes can't be moved because if you, say you did put a fence up in the backyard for your animals and the, the device is in the backyard, call, cause we can move that device to the front yard where everybody's safe and we can do accurate reads.
Okay.
Or at least do the reads. Okay.
Those boxes were put in quite a while ago.
I'm sorry?
Those boxes were put in quite a while ago.
Yeah, I mean, the original one's almost sort of like a car speedometer, an old one. And then there are little black boxes that get that meter read and then they take that and they look at it, displays the number and they write it in the book. Again, the new systems, all they'll do is read off the tower, or the other one is you would then take the data from their laptop, plug it into the system, download the data and the billing is going to happen. We're not spending three days, four days, five days entering books.
It's not taking, you know, we, just for data entry on this half, two weeks collecting the data.
It's a slow process.
So what can you do to take?
So you're saying that things are done manually, data entered in. The bill that I just got, I've never had an issue in all my five years, but now it just seems like it's a thousand gallons more and I've been charged extra. So could it be an error?
It could be, and that's why I tell people, you know, make an appointment, cause I'm not always here.
So should I go read the meter and see what number's on it now?
You can do that and take a picture and email it to me. Come in, I'll go over the books with you. If you look at my books, there's all these little yellow tacky notes on the side of them. Those are all meters that need to be replaced or at least investigated. That's my site, it's probably close to 400.
Thanks, Susan.
I just wanted to know, what can you do meter reading?
Quarterly.
Four times a year.
If the bill comes out, where's the bill?
Any else found that subject? Okay. Uh, next item is Emerson Drive and Seacord Lane, the lead pipe survey, um, update. So we have, um, I believe I was talking to just the sewer plant, we were down to just two homes. We captured that data, I believe, today. And so we're a hundred percent surveyed on Emerson Drive and Seacord and Douglas. So, hooray.
That should make Nancy happy.
Thank you for all your work. I know a lot of the neighbors have been out, um, talking to different neighbors and saying, if you haven't done it, please do so. Um, cause the timing at this point is perfect because your roads will be milled tomorrow. Um, and paving is scheduled for Thursday and Friday of this week. Well, that'll be happening.
And a shout out to our police department for also going door to door, banging on them to get people to open up and do the survey.
Thank you, Brian. Scared a few people with that. They're going, what did I do? So, um, let's see, we do have a little bit more, I'll let, uh, Chris give an update on that. Uh, next is, uh, just an update on the Memorial Park well pump. Uh, the pump has been installed, but we're having a problem with the control panel. So it's a variable speed pump. So that means is we can take that thing and turn it all the way up as fast as it can go or turn it down if the water levels are, are not really where they need to be. So we can turn it down or up. There's a problem with the control panel and the company is working on that right now. They've ordered some parts and we're waiting for that to come in so we can get that, uh, bring the department to help and get that well up and running.
Now, what was that well, Tom?
How long has it been out?
Yeah.
Uh, probably since, I don't know, take a stab, 14, 15, somewhere in there.
Yeah, some for droughts.
Because we did it. And it'll be, yeah, the water quality is, is good. We're filtering it besides, um, but the per gallon per minute is decent. So we're going to blend it with the rest of the water coming out of our main wells that are behind Gordon's Field in that area. Some progress on that. Um, just an update on High Grove Wells. Um, we've been, I'm sorry, well, I have High Grove here. That's, so for High, I'm sorry, for Woodfield, that's the, Woodfield is our sewer lift station. So the, we had a pump in that particular, um, area went bad. It was, it got jammed up with material. The pump basically ceased, they replaced it. And this is another one where there's a, an issue with the control panel to the pump and they're troubleshooting that as we speak. The pump is up and running, um, just not controllable, um, for, you know, speed and so forth. So more to come on that one. Thanks for that, appreciate that. So for High Grove, our new development, um, we have, um, actually two wells on that property that were drilled by the Rieger, uh, Rieger Homes way back when. Uh, one well that's, uh, close proximity to a road was the best producing well at the time. And so we're sorting the process to develop that. We've, last meeting, we hired a firm to start the process with our engineer Jim Far, uh, Jim Far. And they're going to be scheduling meetings so that we can, you know, get the process to get that water part of our, uh, system too. The good thing about that well, it's a deeper well. Um, our main wells are aquifer wells, which means that's, they're only, believe it or not, 42, 40 feet deep. And, you know, we get 550, 750,000 gallons of water out of those wells. So there's a tremendous amount of water. Obviously the bad side is if you get into a drought situation, you don't really have much play because your wells are very shallow. So we need to rely on our deeper wells and we need these wells to support the other main wells during times of drought. So again, more to come on that as they develop the plans and so forth.
First, first.
I'm sorry, can I do?
Yeah, Tom, how much of well at Gordon's? That's Creamy.
Uh, well, at Gordon's?
They had a Creamy well, well there, the water tower. Creamy uses tons and tons of water. They had their own well there.
You know, kind of ringing a bell that there was a well on the property.
There's a water tower, there's a big smokestack.
Now, something, something's reminding me that, that it wasn't producing anything any longer. Like we tried to go on Cardinal Drive where there was like an Artesian well and we drilled that thing during one of the droughts and we couldn't find any water at all.
I know the Creamy used tons and tons of water.
Yeah.
They weren't on the village.
Yeah. We can call the school, I don't know, I mean, it's a bus garage area now, but I don't, something's ringing in my head.
Right where the buses are parked between, uh, the village, the village building, you know, town building there and where, you know, Sir Terrell's house was.
Okay.
It was right in there.
Okay. All right, yeah, I'll make a note and talk to a few people and see if they know anything about that.
I'm surprised the school didn't use it.
Well, yeah.
For what you busted this up.
I mean, it's a close, you know, close proximity to our, our wells.
Yeah, it might be on the same acre.
Yeah, I'm sure it is. I'm sure it is. Yeah. Okay, thanks. Okay, into High Grove Wells, High Grove. Next item is the High Grove Road dedication update. So just, uh, earlier or later this afternoon, we, we did receive resolutions and so forth to dedicate the roads, um, and green areas and, and everything else. Um, our attorneys, uh, working with the Rieger Homes and a bunch of engineers, we have all the paperwork done and it's been confirmed and verified and everything's been properly filed. So we have that, um, but because we got it the last, you know, kinda just before this meeting, we're going to put it on our, um, next meeting's agenda to pass that resolution. Uh, dedicate the roads for, uh, High Grove as well as everything else around it, monuments, et cetera. So we'll take care of that. Yes, sir?
When is the next meeting?
Third Monday.
Good morning, thank you.
Sorry.
Good morning.
I guess I'll see you on the 20th.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ian.
Yeah, we have a couple of checks to, to, you know, forget about.
If you had the whip, I'll be there.
Take care on that.
Thanks. Okay. All righty. So next, uh, item is the update, uh, as we mentioned a little bit earlier, the milling and paving of Avery and Boulevard from North Street to Washington Boulevard. And then same work will be happening on Emerson and Seacord. Um, Chris, I don't know if you want to add any, or, you know, give a little update on that or?
Uh, Avery was milled today, all day.
Yep.
They got it done. So tomorrow, we plan that there was, uh, Emerson and Seacord and, uh, whether permitting paid, they'll take pride.
We've already received four C T Y messages regarding this.
Yeah, we apologized. I don't know if anybody got them. I got three, some people got four. Uh, and this thing was like, I don't know what it was doing. Actually, we called the company and what it was trying to do, but failed miserably, I think. Uh, it was only supposed to be calling back people that didn't answer the phone, but it just rapid fired like three times, four times.
Called everybody.
Okay, okay.
Called everybody.
So.
Everybody should know.
So everybody should know. Um, so hopefully by the, uh, by the end of the week, everything will be paved and then we'll move on to, um, small sections of Peacock and, um, Mockingbird. And then we need the driveway done over by the mantra mat and dance studio. We own the center, so we're going to be cleaning that up and making it, uh, presentable, cause there's tons of little, uh, large potholes on that, but, um, and then looking forward to next year, um, we're using, um, probably almost $300,000 out of 403, uh, three dollars that, um, we'll be looking at roads for next year, determining kind of worst case scenarios and, and taking it from there. One of the projects that we have for next year is, uh, one is Lincoln Drive and its drainage. We also have North Street drainage to start with, cause it's basically metal, metal and almost original. And some of the stuff is in really poor condition, so we need to address that before we pave. So that would be, uh, a big project for next year.
It's huge.
Yes.
Um, I have a question. Brookside Acres, the first entrance of Brookside is Washingtonville. It's owned by, and that has huge potholes there.
On Locust Side or Nicole Side?
Nicole.
Nicole?
Yeah, it's the entrance into it.
Just pass when you're going towards, uh.
It's the actual right wing entrance.
Okay.
Yeah, and I know that's part of Washingtonville.
Chris, can you make a note of that? We can check that?
Do we need an incident report?
Yeah, we'll fill in that. Yes?
Um, Nancy Dolison for Emerson Drive, Washingtonville. Sorry. Um, I also noticed Canterbury. Have you been down Canterbury Road lately?
I have.
Um, it seems pretty broken up. I don't know if that's on the agenda down the road or down the road.
We, we have, we have more down the roads than we, um, have money to throw at this stuff. Um, if we find some type of grant money, then we will go after everything we possibly can. One of the things, again, I was talking to Chris, is that we want to go after sections of, of the village and catalog the roads, catalog curbs, sidewalks, and, you know, see what potentially can be done working with our tips money. Um, we're trying to stay away from borrowing money for paving projects, cause life on a road is supposed to be 10 to potentially 20 years. But it's, it's very, it's a lot of money. And if we can plan it right and do a good potential increase, that we can get some money and seed money and put it away, then we can have enough money and hopefully have a fun balance. Not this year, because, I mean, we're going to have money because we borrowed a lot of money, but a lot of that is going obviously toward bills and everything else. So once we get through our budget process through December and January, we'll, we'll have a, a really good idea of what we can spend. But the inventory needs to be done first. Um, again, because we borrowed that money, we are basically under the microscope of New York State on many, many levels. And one of the levels is, is when it comes to capital projects, we need to have a three year plan for capital projects. So that puts a lot on our DPW, puts a lot on our police, uh, sewer plant, water plant, all of that, so that we can calculate and let them know what we need to be doing in 24, 25, 26. And this is a 10-year loan, so we're going to probably do it two more times after that. So it's, uh, tedious to say, it might take me. Can I answer for you? Good? Okay. Okay. Just want to touch on the event committee in Wichita, Bill, before and after dark. The before was actually delayed till Sunday because of the weather on Saturday. Um, but the after dark event went on, um, went really well. Um, very little particular issues, Chief. I don't know if you want to give a little sentence, cause I know there really wasn't anything happening, thank God. It was a very well attended event, um, nicely laid out, I believe. Um, you know, we have a meeting coming up, I believe, this Thursday.
Thursday night.
That we'll meet and have kind of a recap meeting and to see if there was any potential improvements we could do, um, to the processes, but the vendors were great. Food was plentiful. I think everybody had a great time and, you know, it, it was really, really a good afternoon and evening. And just special thanks to everybody on that committee, cause they worked super hard on it. And, um, yeah, so it went really well.
Nancy, yeah, I was just wondering, um, financially for our vendors and everybody, do they, do you ever, do we ever hear a report about that stuff, how it went?
Well, we're going to have a meeting Thursday night at, I think, 6:30. So the committee is going to give us feedback and we'll give them feedback, you know, from the police department, our DPW, if there was any, you know, particular traffic issues, if it was fencing in the right spot at the right time, you know, all of, all of that good stuff. Just a recap of the whole, whole day's event.
The village doesn't make money from that.
Well, remember the events committee is separate from the village. They're not under our umbrella, but we support them.
Yeah, they're a separate organization.
They raise their money, they pay for all that.
Yeah, they pay for everything.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. Our next item, um, we have discussed a couple of times, a different meeting, but there[1695.62] was a million forty thousand dollars that was, is still hanging out there from the sewer plant operations, um, back from twenty sixteen, I'll say to twenty twenty. Um, there were, again, that million dollars was, is sitting up in, uh, organization in Albany Old EFC, they did the funding. And that funding was sitting out there, because there was a lot of paperwork that was not completed by the village, and to date, we were able to secure a hundred ninety thousand dollars, just basically going through the paperwork, getting bills, doing a lot of basic paperwork. Um, this past week, we were able to secure, got an email, and wired to our bank account twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, we're still pursuing three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, and a few others that are under fifty thousand dollars. So, we'll let you know how that goes, and, uh, we'll keep you in the loop on all of that. Okay. Uh, we've been talking about the Memorial Park security cameras, that process has been moving along. Uh, Chief Sakaro has been taking the lead on that, meeting with vendors. Um, one of the vendors that had, we have secured to install cameras, we met with them last week, went over the locations and infrastructure that's gonna be needed, wiring-wise, potential electric, and we're waiting for the plan to come back from the vendors, so we can sit down and, and properly plan out, you know, putting, uh, some, uh, wiring in the ground, those types of things, so we can set it up properly. There would be a camera somewhere located behind the memorial, on a separate pole. There will be a camera on our wellhouse, and there will be a camera located, third location was by the electrical box, right inside the org, right? So, there'll be basically three cameras, wide, wide zoom, and can basically zero in on you, um, and this is, again, the security for the damage that was done on the light flagpole, um, a number of years ago. So, we hope to get, you know, that going, and get that completed, or at least get the wiring in the ground while the, the weather is still holding. Yes?
How wide are these cameras? How far off does it, the ma-
The actual width?
Yeah, you know, not the camera itself.
Coverage.
Zoom, the coverage?
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know, Chief, did it say on there?
The vendor felt, felt very comfortable with placement of the cameras, or seeing what we needed to see, and a little particular issue.
One camera's gonna cover basically the whole playground area, and then some. The other camera's gonna cover-
You know why I asked a question? Because, um, I'm wondering if we could have something put in the Georgia Park area?
Okay, that's a different project?
Okay.
Yeah, this is just for the Memorial Park at the moment.
No, I realize that.
Yeah.
I thought maybe we could, uh, do-
Yeah, we'll, it's just, uh, just about the money and the budget, so.
It's okay.
If we can swing this, and then we can get some pricing for, um, for an Allen Park, yes, we've, we kinda did some preliminary walkthroughs where cameras would be helpful. Definitely down the path.
Yeah.
And all that good stuff, added bathrooms, again, the playground area, um, you know, we're developing, we used to be, the roller hockey rink is now gonna get turned into half, it will be, uh, pickable courts. So, that's in progress, so. So, the cameras will be there to, you know, keep an eye on things.
And that plan, by the way, because I was in on that meeting, specifically had a camera going down that path.
Yes.
Towards the park, so it would be covered.
All right, thank you.
All right, no worries. Um, another item for tonight, so there's gonna be an introduction for a public hearing on double utility poles. So, you know, there's a lot of communities that, um, end up with replacement of poles between O N R, potentially telephone companies, uh, whoever, and if you ever see them, they put a new pole in, they leave the old pole.
Yeah.
Seems to take forever, transfer light wiring over to one pole to the other pole, then another pole sits there for months on time. Well, this local law will give them a timeframe in which they need to remove it, or otherwise they get fined. Because it's an eyesore, it's a hazard, and, uh, some of them are falling down. Excuse me, some of them are broken, so that's what this local law's gonna represent.
They have a whole mess of those poles in, uh, Brookside.
Yeah.
Near, near, near the creek.
Really?
Are those pressure-treated poles or something? They don't look like they decayed.
No, they're, the old poles used to be soaked in some materials.
Pretty, pretty old.
I don't know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say oil tar, I don't know. The newer stuff look like, yeah, like, you know, wood for a deck, you know, it's greenish color, but what it is, I don't know.
Okay.
Our next item is fire district, uh, tax exemption. So, this is a work in progress, we hope to have some more information from the, our attorneys and so forth. So, this is for any volunteer fireman who can get an exemption on his, uh, property taxes of ten, uh, a maximum of ten percent. And so, that's a, just wanted to mention it, again, it's a work in progress. We had up here the Sunoco car wash parking with the ambulance court. Yeah, yeah.
Oh, he's choking?
Sorry.
I personally met with the owner, and I would like, his name is Ramsey, the owner of Sunoco in our village, and I would like to dispel a rumor. Um, it's been all over social media that the owner was charging our volunteer ambulance court, um, rental space for their parking. That is not true. And not only is that not true, for fifteen years, they have allowed a vehicle to park alongside the ambulance buil, the building, to the right, as far right as they can get, without blocking their entrance into the car wash area, and their dumpster, we mean, there. Now, currently, the dumpster has been removed, so when I met with him, I asked him, since the dumpster is gone, how would you feel about maybe a second car? And he kinda laughed, but he agreed that he would allow a second car, as long as they're not side by side, they have to be, um, vertical, not horizontal. So, they're not blocking his entrance, but he would allow two vehicles to park there. So, it was disturbing, because some of the language and what was being suggested on Facebook is to call the hot Sunoco. Um, so I wanted to speak with him myself, and hear what he had to say. This man lives here. I knew that. I didn't know that. He's a resident in the village. He has three children and partners that are in our school district. So, he was upset and concerned with, you know, he heard and saw what was being said, and it couldn't have been farther from the truth. He didn't have to even get in one spot, you know, he's allowing to. So, I just felt we owed that to him, to on record say, you know, what, what his side was there. Patrice?
I, I appreciate you informing us, but I think because social media has been blown over with that aspect, I'm wondering if maybe the village, um, might be doing something back on social media, or him?
Well, I told him during that meeting that I would.
Okay.
But I wanted it on the record, I told him it will be, I wanted to say something at the next meeting, just to have it, you know.
No statement saying, don't go to Sunoco, don't use them, that sort of thing, so.
No, yeah, it's not been pretty. And he's well aware. And it was really unfair and unjust, so. He's also working beautifully with us, because they wanna redo all of their signage. I mean, there's no larger signage in our village than that of a, a gas station with a car wash and a convenience store. You know, so there's a lot going on over there, and they could not be more cooperative. His understanding of our, um, pushback to be more of, um, keep the integrity of the historical piece of the village, and cooperating in terms of some of the changes that he's going to have to make, um, regarding colors and such. More, more on that with the comp committee and the A R B.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, next would be the local image, um, that you were there.
Yes, um, the lady who had been doing the cleaning here is retiring, so we need to get another cleaning company in here. We brought in three companies, the scope of work that was explained was, once a week, we need trash emptied, we need desktops where possible dusted off, we need vacuuming, the two bathrooms need to be cleaned, as well as mopping of the hallway there. We had three companies, Jenny's Cleaning Services, Bright Horizons, and Doc's Cleaning Services. Jenny's came, she gave me a verbal amount, however, it was requested at the bid we put in writing, I did not receive a bid back from her writing. Uh, Bright Horizons, based on what I explained, the scope of work, bid at one-twenty-five for cleaning, and Doc's, um, quote came in at two-nineteen-fifty, I believe, was the exact amount. So, my recommendation to the board would be go with Bright Horizons. Um, this is not a contract, if we are unsatisfied with the services, they can be let go at any time. So, I would, if you wanna ask for approval, Tom, or your mother?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. So, with that, um, we need a resolution to accept the three bids, one that did not respond in writing, the other D O C S came in at two-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars for-
That's what it should be, two-nineteen-fifty. I thought it's incorrect amount.
Two-nineteen-fifty?
Yes.
For cleaning, that was second, second bid, and first bid, who, and the cleaning is Bright Horizon, at a hundred and twenty-five dollars per cleaning. Have a motion on that, please?
Motion.
Senator Susan. Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
I'm sorry, I was just confused, who did you get?
Bright Horizon.
One, one of twenty-five.
One of twenty-five.
I was like, why?
No.
What was the reason for such a large difference?
What did?
What was the reason for such a large difference?
You know, everybody has different, um, our big thing is, is that-
Well, you know, cleaning product was organic, or, you know what I'm saying?
They didn't explain, it's just someone sent two people, someone sent three people, someone sent four people.
Okay.
You know? It, it is a large difference, you know, and we do explain to everybody, this is a competitive bid. Our procedure is, we have to get at least three quotes, so they know they're going up against other people, it's not like-
What about individual people in our company?
We have to have, so if somebody's gonna come in, in here and clean, they have to be, have, go through a background check through the police department.
Of course.
And they have to be licensed and bonded. So, an individual, like, home cleaner, we can't really do that.
I'm not boss here, I'm just asking.
Yeah, no, we've looked at all sides, and the idea is, first of all, we don't want a contract, we don't wanna commit to paying you for six months, and then a month later, we're like, eh? And like I said, they have to be willing to, and every company was also told that they're gonna have to submit the name of the employees that are gonna be in here, and our police is gonna run a background check on them.
Thank you, guys, sorry for sliding into interruption. You, everything okay with that? You guys?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, one quick question, you say that they're licensed, you mean they're licensed by the secretary? The Secretary of State, you have a business license?
They have a license, they are a licensed business, it's not, I'm gonna do a side hustle and, you know.
There's not a license for, that's not a license for cleaning. It's not a, it's not industry-specific.
No, it's not, but we need to make sure that it's a legit business for hiring, not a side gig. Nothing against that, what's that?
I'm just asking, I was curious, but, you know.
Thank you.
We have, um, a resolution that we need to adopt tonight regarding moratorium, so I'll apologize, it's not on the agenda, but we need a resolution, um, for a public hearing on November twentieth at seven P M. to adopt the continuation of moratorium on local law. And we need that form of motion, have a motion?
Motion.
Senator Susan, have a second? Bernie?
This is just to extend the current moratorium for another six months.
Questions, comments?
And it's only a public hearing, it's only yes or no, it's a public hearing regarding.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass this five-zero. Just wanted to also just bring everyone's attention, and more for the manufactured home area, that Orange Rockland, um, gave us an email indicating that residents that are living on, on the streets of Park Circle, East Avenue, Manor Drive, could be experiencing power outages no more than four hours between nine and three P M. this Monday through Thursday. What they're doing is preventive maintenance of underground wiring and doing some silicone sealing. So, if you experience anything in that on those particular streets, O N R indicated that everyone was given a phone call.
No.
And, uh, you're the, what person told me that, so I really doubt anything was done. I'm gonna reach out to them tomorrow, um, or contact Teresa, and I will let her know that it doesn't appear that anybody was contacted. I'm not sure how they were doing it.
A lot of people are working during the day.
Yeah.
Phone calls should be made in that.
Well, if it's something similar to a robo-call, you know, if you're registering, you should go to a cell phone.
Yeah.
You know, how they getting your, your phone numbers anyway?
I just know, I saw the trucks. I just saw the trucks.
You saw the trucks, okay.
And I know, I went up to them and asked them.
Got you. Good. Let's see, next would be a resolution, as we discussed a little bit earlier, regarding the historian, resolution to adopt local law establishing the expansion of residency requirements for the position of village historian in the village of Washingtonville. Have a motion, please? Steve, second?
Second.
Senator, second. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed five-zero. Next is a resolution to schedule a public hearing for local law, adding Article Five Utility Posts to Chapter Two-Sixty of the Village of Washington Code, requiring utility companies to remove inactive, broken, or replaced utility poles within village boundaries on November twentieth at seven P M. Motion?
Motion.
Steve, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed this five-zero. Next is a resolution to authorize the Village of Washingtonville to advertise for a full-time clerk, clerical. This would deal off the Orange County Civil Service list. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Any other comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five-oh. Next is a resolution to authorize the Village of Washingtonville to advertise for a part-time clerk position.
Motion.
Second. Steve, questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero. Next is a resolution to renew the dental plan for the village police department, C D P H P Dental, at the same rate as left here. Motion?
Motion.
Steve, second? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Pass this five-zero. Next is a resolution to declare surplus police department equipment and damaged A T V. And, we have. So, the equipment to be surplus is seven holsters for firearm that were replaced in twenty-twenty, no longer fit to be used with their current firearms. Second is four magazine holders, item three are handcuff cases. Fourth item is six for Horizon, M I F I jet packs, but no longer activated. Um, there's also equipment we will attempt to sell for parts on gov bids dot com, another or another municipal website, which would be a two-thousand-two Polaris Sport A T vin, number four X A is an Apple, C H five-zero A two-two, C is in Charles, six-one-three-eight-five-five. This A T V is, is no longer repairable. And that, for a motion, please? Steve, second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero. Next is resolution to declare surplus village department of public works equipment. Uh, the equipment would be a twenty-sixteen Scag Giant Back Bin number four, S-nine-G-one-two-seven-one-three-G-W-three-two-three-one-seven-one. Next is a two-thousand-and-six Chevy Silverado Pickup, Bin number one G-C-E-K-one-four-V-X-six-Z-two-eight-one-three-five-three. Next item is a two-thousand-and-two International Dump Truck with plow and sander, Bin number Next item nineteen-ninety-six-four, uh, Model five-five-five-D, tobacco, serial number And last item is a stove towable cement mixer, serial number five, I'm sorry. And last item is a stove towable cement mixer, cereal number five, I'm sorry, cereal number nine five one zero three nine six. Have a form of motion, please?
Motion.
Second? Comments, questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Uh, next resolution is to allow the Brookshire Board to meet at the Village Hall on Wednesday, November twenty-ninth at six P M at their annual meeting. Have a motion?
Motion.
Have a second, please? Questions, comments? All in favor?
I'm gonna abstain because I do own a unit in there.
Okay.
And I was just gonna, what is the meeting for exactly?
It's their annual meeting. And when they, they don't have enough space in their little clubhouse. Holds about forty people. So you're abstaining, so would you need a vote?
Who's opening?
Well, by then we'll have the key process in place, otherwise you won't.
Well, now?
You said it. No, no returns. Okay. All right, so, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. We have four, zero, one, abstaining. Okay. Next is a resolution to authorize village police chief Brian Zaccaro to attend the New York State Intelligence Summit on Thursday, November sixteenth and Friday, November seventeenth at the Sagawar Resort in Bolton Landings, New York. The cost of the conference and hotel are free of charge and the food is paid for by the Federal Homeland Security Department. Uh, very intelligent. That means going for his M B A, oh no.
Motion.
Have a motion? Donna, second?
Second.
Vernon? Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Next is a resolution to authorize the approval to transfer a village property located behind one thirty-two East Main Street to the current owner is George Watts. Have a motion? Motion? Vernon?
Yes.
Second? Second. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Excuse me, what's the, what's that about?
Green area. You're familiar with, probably been in enough meetings, but where the village has green areas that abut private properties. The people are, most of them are taking care of the properties by mowing it, maintaining it. And certain situations, that property can be transferred to the owner, can be deeded over to the homeowner.
Okay.
And so he becomes responsible for that property.
So how much, how much property is that that we're transferring to him?
Footage? I'd have to get you the map.
Probably less than half an acre.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's long, ninety-four, past Maple. It's probably the third or fourth house, you know, Wayne lives. It's the house next door.
Okay.
And he's extending it to the same depth that Wayne has.
Okay.
Uh, so what we end up doing in that case the request comes in, we look at the property to make sure that there's no drainage easements, electrical, any kind of utilities. It's just basic green area that is nonusable to anybody. And people sometimes would say, you know, I want to take care of it. Can I get a process to, you know, obtain the property? So we help them through that process. And they pay all their, they pay all the fees, they gotta get a survey, they pay for our attorney fees, et cetera, et cetera.
They pay taxes.
And then they'll be paying taxes on their portion of property as well.
And it's less of a burden for us because if something happens in it right now, our guys have to go in and clean it up or whatever. Tree comes down or something and it crosses over a property line. So makes it easier.
There's a lot, a lot of green areas like that that over the years have been transferred.
Transferred.
Yeah. And in cases if there are utilities or an easement where the drain pipe, deed is written up that they can't, we still need access to that particular area so that they know and everybody's on the same page. So it's not like they get full cart launch after, after the survey.
It's pleasant experience, I did this many, many years ago. I have a strip on the side of eighteen-
Oh, you're right on the board.
Yeah, I need to watch the scoreboard, so we got like a hundred and sixty by forty strip. Same way, pay for the survey, pay for the
Yep.
legal fees. And there is an easement because there is a drainage pipe underneath it.
Yeah.
We put a fence up and understanding the fence will be torn down if they have to dig the pipe.
Right.
It's cutting it anyway, so.
I'd just say, those green areas were put in him for rigor because that's how he got to build that building. That was part of the deal.
Yeah. Well, you know, there's, there's
Which one, there's-
There's about a thousand of them. Some, some are good, some are miserable. Some, I think, between the buffers, they, they, they just sort of been shared by, you know, the neighbors, you know? But but through the green area, it's gotta be green, maybe you can't build on it.
But that's how, that's how he sold the idea of building there.
I'm sorry, did?
That's how he sold the idea of building your building because they had green areas.
Yeah. Yeah. But, you know, some are good, some are just in really bad spots. We have things that are landlocked. Over the years, people put up back to our fences, we have no access to the property anymore. You know, a tree starts leaning and every, you know, phone calls are made, but we can't even get there now. We need easement agreements to get through their, somebody's property and try to get back there. So it's, yeah, it's not a bad thing in, in certain cases. Should we vote on that, do we? Yeah, we did, okay. Next is a resolution to accept the resignation letter from village Corson Gore Linda Steinberg, effective Wednesday, November eighth. And the village wishes her and her family all the best as they're relocating. So she's been with the village a number of years and, um, yeah. So it's kind of with regret. She does a great job for the village and, um-
Did we get a replacement, please?
We have an application coming in, but she has been under the weather and hasn't been able to get in here. That doesn't mean we're not looking for an additional person because her hours are somewhat limited. I think on Fridays. So any, anybody who would be interested to support and help it would think the chief would
I think you have three hours in the afternoon now.
There are, you know the afternoon hours, chief?
Uh, seven A M. to nine A M. and then two to three P M., three fifteen, roughly. Just school days.
Yep, just school days. You're off on holiday.
No, I'm just looking at- That's dangerous.
And your weekend. And your applications and, where do you want to start?
I really feel for her.
Between you and Mike, you guys got jobs already. Okay, so, I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Next is a resolution to allow Burn Island Park to be utilized for overflow parking for the hosting of the Washingtonville Youth Football League Twenty Twenty-three Mighty Might Bowl. That will be held on Saturday, November eleventh. Parking would be necessary between seven A M. and three P M. Have a motion, please? Have a motion, Vernon, on the second? Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Oh, we already did, so we did that.
The mayor?
Steve? Yes, sir.
Was there a resolution on one forty-nine once? I know you talked about it, but I don't know if there was, we don't have a resolution.
Yeah, we did.
We did the- To authorize the transfer?
Yes, sir.
Do you need the second and the first?
Commit the motion in the second because we didn't have it.
Uh, hang on a second.
Motion and second?
Vern was the motion, Steve was second. It was five zero.
I have a question. On the, on the same day, you have two things going on, the memorial. In the beginning, you have the B F W ceremony and one-
That's the memorial park, Veterans Park.
Memorial. Oh, it's a poem, sorry.
It'll make me nervous.
It's a good thing.
It's a calendar, it's like, whoa, yeah. Yeah, and it's only the parking lot, they're not, they're not playing ball there, it's just overflow because they're gonna have a lot of different teams and they just need more parking spaces, yeah. Well, we actually took care of resolution one fifty-two. Has been resolved. And then abstract resolution to authorize budget transfers and amendments as necessary to effect necessary transfers above funds and two-page warrants. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second? Donna, Steve? Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. And we have the next, where we got a public comment, if anyone has anything they'd like to talk about. Yeah?
Um, Patrice Percolaine. Um, on the website, under the notices for residents, there's a notice for the Orange County Transit, a fourteen-day public comment period on Orange County Transit for buses, by Curious Joel. What is that if you thought?
Well, what we're, what we're doing is just trying to keep the residents informed to know what the detail is behind it, to be honest with you. They don't, but I get these notifications from Orange County, the legislature body, and I just want to share it with the residents.
Got it.
So if you needed some information, I would say you need to, I could dig a little deeper, reach out to one of the legislators and they could get back to you with the detail. If I remember correctly, this was discussed a while ago, but what they were looking for, I think were additional buses. Because they were keeping track of their mileage, of what the, where the buses were going and their population has increased, so with that, there's a need for additional buses. I think that was on one of the minutes that I also published. Anything I get from those guys, I just, you know, try to get it out there for everybody to, to view. I know it's another meeting, another day and another month, so it's easier just to kind of read the minutes.
Phil, it said that it was federally funded. So I'm thinking, wouldn't it be nice if we had, like if Warwick has those small buses that just go around?
The Nile bus?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we do, we can take advantage of what the, what the town does. I don't know if we necessarily want to replicate it because it's obviously more of an expense and all the things that go with it. And so we work with the, the village or the town. And we have access to those buses if people need to know their routes and their schedules. We can certainly get that and also post that.
And Patrice, those types of things that would be good to bring up at the com-
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's on my list.
Michael?
Mike Brezzi on Three Large Street, two questions, Tom. First of all, have you, do you have an update on the D O T survey in the village? Have they done it yet?
No.
The traffic study?
No, they have not. I actually have to respond back to an email because I had sent them several different requests and some of them they've turned down, thinking they're not needed. Um, so I'm gonna respond back, but no, they have not done that. They haven't, the crossing, those warning crosswalks on things that I'm talking about? Safety thing, um. If it's on a village road, we can do whatever we basically want to buy them, we can buy them. I, I would like to try to get grant money for those things because they're about fifteen thousand dollars.
I'm more, I'm more interested in the automated or traffic signals in the village with the video and like they do in other villages and things to help alleviate some of the problems we have.
Yeah, well, some of that we're working, Brian is actually, I don't know, Brian, did your recent grant request include any of that type of monitoring?
We were more traffic, or license plate readers and surveillance cameras.
Yeah. But they, but to monitor traffic going through intersections? Well, we have the, the scanners.
It would be strategically placed just to kind of visually look at different intersections if an accident happened or become
Yeah.
that sort of thing, but not really for the traffic signals?
Is there anything our village can do to engage the D O Ts to really try to get them? I mean, you know, I know it takes six years to put a traffic light down by Curious Joel down there, so they put that temporary one up.
Yeah.
But I think we gotta fight, we gotta fight to get this, this system in because it's, it'll be beneficial for everybody in this village.
And, and describe that system to me again, what you're-
Oh, there's, there's video cameras, what they, they, they look at the traffic in the different directions and they'll adjust the timing on the traffic light.
Okay.
And those run around six hundred and fifty thousand dollars a light.
The engineer from Sixty, like East of the street is like describing that. Right.
Actually, these four, these four different traffic signals, traffic lights, they have you look. You have a double, one with a directional.
Right, yes.
You have again over on South Street, two, the other way, two, and over here, two.
Do we need one for each direction?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Circle around and-
No. I like the way you think though.
Yeah.
That's why the D O T is hiding it because of the cost.
Yeah, but only one light.
Two?
Which?
Number one, that the, um, that you're gonna install one, I believe, on the tolling, the North Street Interception to ninety-four. And number one-
And it doesn't have a traffic light there.
They should put one there though.
They should put one there.
They should put one there and make a sign on it with the number nine four.
Yeah, I mean, the request was to have them come in and, and do that traffic study as we discussed.
Yep.
They said they made a timing change a number of years ago and my response is, well, that was a number of years ago.
Traffic-
And, you know, I wanted to get out there and take videos at four o'clock, five o'clock from North Street up to Brotherwood Winery is backed up traffic.
Yep.
And, you know, the-
Terrible.
It's a, it's a gridlock insanity.
South Street is backed up past my house.
You know, it's very, it's very difficult.
That's what I'm saying though, can't, can't, I mean, I-
Well, yeah, we're pressuring and now that I have to-
Call the D O T and say-
Well, I'm trying, yeah. D O T is not gonna, you know, to be honest with you, D O T is not gonna pay attention to us.
No.
I have to go through, you know, the senators, I have to go through the assembly people. And those guys, when I sent them the information, they promptly center up. And to be honest with you, they actually did get a response back within, I just got it last week. Which is, to me, it's almost like light speed. But, you know, they kind of agreed to look at some things, but there's a number of things that I totally disagree with and I gotta respond to it. So we'll, we'll push them.
What about a petition?
I'm sorry?
What about having a petition?
I could talk to the senator and assembly to see if that would do any good. You know?
Well, I-
You know, I mean, what they normally look for from us is simple, is just a resolution. Then they take that resolution, they say, village board, village agrees with it. You know, use their resolution. And then phone calls start happening.
Brian, can you correct me if I'm wrong, but once we redo the zoning and the com committees complete with their revisions of you know, the plan of moving forward, wouldn't that have, be something that needs to be done?
Something that needs to be-
The traffic study.
Um, as part of the comp plan?
Yeah.
Not necessarily. I mean, you could incorporate a traffic study, I mean, but sometimes traffic studies are done for a specific project. You know, so if you were planning some village-related change that would involve, you know, traffic, um, changes or things like that. But typically, I wouldn't say that traffic studies are always part of a comp plan. They might be a topic or a subject in there, but usually an actual traffic study is tied to a project that somebody's building, you know, where they put out, you know, the, the counters and they actually do vehicle counts and things like that.
So we have to wait once until the proposal comes in, the application comes in?
Yeah, for a project specific, again, the comp plan could address traffic when you talk about changing your zoning. If you make a commercial area that's not commercial now, then you might look at, you know, potential traffic impact, but it wouldn't necessarily be a traffic study as, as I would use that term.
I just had one more thing, Tom.
Sure. Right in front of where the flower shop used to be in the village, they just moved out recently.
Yeah.
That's wandering there, when you, can you, can we get the D O T to lift that one just like they did on two oh eight across from, uh, say Spear Brothers Printing up the street a little bit, that one there, they had, uh, actually, they were out there a couple of years ago.
Is it right in front of the store?
Right in front of the store, it's, it's sunk down, you know?
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it should be raised up another-
Is it in the street or is it?
In the street.
That's, yeah, but that's Spear Brothers.
Yes, it is.
Everybody's saying what you did.
We gotta engage the D O T on that.
Vote tomorrow?
Thank you.
Vote? Yes?
Edie Johnson, one five three Round Hill Road, um, election day tomorrow.
Yeah.
If anybody, um- If anybody, um, is in doubt, or if you think of anybody that you know that might be in doubt with polling places, um, I got a list this morning from a resident, and, uh, it's on We the People and in the Courier. And, um, if anybody has any questions about this Proposition Three, there's also a, a pretty lengthy explanation of why it's being discussed. Right now, there are three absent spots already on the council board, or as of the first of the year. And so it's, it's really important that it have a, a legacy of understanding and knowledge that people are on the board, and it's way too risky to have the potential of the whole board being new every two years. Um, also, Steve Lamonte sent me later today, pretty long list, all the communities around us are, um, four years, and, um, the scattered terms. It seems to be consistent thought from most people, but somebody was trying to stir the soup a little and sent, sent around a, a notice that it's a big paragraph.
So, uh, everybody. We don't really know where that generated from.
Generated from Muncie.
Yeah. Saturday.
It came right from Muncie.
Yeah, well, you said it, so.
Yeah, well, yeah, there you go.
But the thing is, is there were. Not everything on that was factual information. And so Kupon Orange came out and made a statement.
And where's her name on it?
As did, um.
Somebody pirated their.
Preserve Blooming Grove, because they were using, I think, their names in support of, if I'm correct.
I mean, I, even when I first saw it online, I thought, you know, this can't be Preserve Blooming Grove.
It confused a lot of residents. I know I've received messages today regarding this, and people were confused and not understanding. So is it a good thing, is it a bad thing? And I don't state where I stand, but I will send you the information so you can make a rationalized decision.
Does anybody here not understand what they're trying to do?
Proposition Three.
With three?
Is it to make the terms?
Staggering.
Just staggering.
Basically staggering four-year terms. They used to be four, prior to the wards popping in. But at the end of, you know.
Currently, they're two.
They're currently two, but when the wards were created, everybody was elected at the same time. So, you know, go through a number of years, and it's been an election for seven people. The, you know, the, the, in my mind, the right thing to do is, you know, similar to what every board does, is that you stagger it so you have potentially some new people, and you still have some people that have been around to know, and you can guide people through, you know, what, what's been going on, type of a thing. Rather than just in a flash, you have seven new people, and that potentially, you know, in my mind, would be a dangerous thing. Just because they have no idea what's going on.
Everybody's turning up at the same time.
If you take, take a look at the, this year's budget, it's like seventy-nine pages of columns and little tiny squares. Can't even imagine understanding the whole thing, even with years and years of experience.
Yeah.
So are they extending terms from two to four years?
Two to four, and.
Two to four, and then stagger.
So is it, is it clear, though, that this election, it will still be seven people elected to two years until this proposition is accepted?
Correct.
But that's what you're voting on.
Yeah, no, you're voting on.
So this year, there'll still be seven, one, one per, one per ward?
Yeah, I think they.
And then, if it's agreed, then they'll come out the next two years from now.
No, that, that'll be effective in January.
January.
So the first terms, and just a full disclosure, I represent the town of Blooming Grove, so I'm familiar with the law. Um, it, it would start in January, the four-year term. Part of the problem in reality, I mean, I didn't see this flyer you're talking about, but the idea of the two-year term stagger was discussed, but when you really lay it out and look at it, you end up overlapping anyway, and it makes it very difficult to fall into the normal election cycle if you do it that way, because there's seven members. So basically, starting in January, it takes, I believe, three or four members of the board become four-year, and then the other members of the board do two years, and then they convert to four years. So it's kind of a mix.
Is it obvious on the ballot which ones are four years, which ones are two?
It's not done by the person, although, I'm sorry, it is, it is. It's by ward, yes. The wards are identified, which wards will be converting in January, and then it tells you which wards will convert two years.
So we're ward two, right?
Ward two are the village, correct?
Well, where I live.
Your ward, yeah, your two.
So, so is it clear on the ballot tomorrow, when I'm voting for ward twos in Combe, or I guess not, I don't think in Combe, because I don't know the openings, openings are, but is it clear if I'm voting for a two-year term or a four-year term?
Yes, it identifies the wards, it basically spells out that on January first, twenty twenty-four, these three wards will convert to four-year terms. And then in, uh, January of twenty-six, these other numbered wards, whichever they were.
Fairly random, like the odd numbers are two years, and the even numbers are four years.
It's close, but not exactly, because of vacancies, the way it worked out. It's, it's not like one, three, five, I think it's like one, three, four, and two, five, six, seven. The supervisor's at large, so he's not.
But it won't say on the front of the ballot, under the people you're voting for, because the resolution has to pass before they can assign it to it.
Well, right, you're voting for whoever you vote for separately. And if they're ward two, and you vote for your ward two person, and they get elected January first, they'll be in a four-year term. But the ward question is just a ward question. Do you want staggered terms with four-year ward terms?
It would be helpful to know if I'm voting for, if the, if the options are nobody I like. I would prefer that they're the two-year than the four-year.
Right, then you'd be against the proposition.
No, I might be for the proposition, but I'm not.
Yeah, yeah, you don't know who's gonna win the election, obviously. That's, that's the difficult part. I don't know, if you got a moment, I can always look it up while you guys are going on. I think I have the proposition itself.
I think we're done. We just have the executive session.
Yeah, yeah, you can finish your, your thought.
Yeah, no, I was just gonna see if I could find the proposition, you know, that, that's going on the ballot, um, to see what the language was, so you would know.
Well, the only thing for us is.
But I, I mean, a couple people approached me about this today.
So we'll see what the.
Federal, federal representatives change every two years?
In the meantime, we're, um, going to go into executive session, and then come out of executive session, and then close our meeting. Um, there's no voting, no decisions being made, it's a discussion for contracts. So, in essence, the meeting, uh, make the resolution that we can adjourn into executive session. Have a motion? Motion. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. So essentially, the meeting is now, we're in executive session. If you're welcome to hang out and wait for attorneys, uh, information.
Yeah, I find, yeah, pressure's on. Okay, I found it. I think this is it. So it's, it's gonna read, basically, shall the terms of the town council members and town supervisor be increased from two to four years? Because one of the changes here is supervisor also going four years, along with the board members. Uh, effective January twenty twenty-four for town supervisor and town council members in wards one, four, and six, elected in the November twenty twenty-three election. So in this election, whoever's in one, four, and six will go to a four-year term, along with the supervisor, January first, if it passes. Then it goes on to say, in effective January first, twenty twenty-six, the term shall be increased to four years for the town council members in wards two, three, and five, elected in the November twenty twenty-five election. And it goes on to say that they'll be staggered. But, so that's the split in the two wards. So you'll, your vote, whoever you vote for in ward two will only be in for two years, and then in twenty twenty-five, they'll go to the four-year term if the proposition passes this year. If not, everybody stays two years, and all seven of them are up for election every two years. And one of the, you know, reasons obviously against that was, uh, as the mayor pointed out, your entire board is potentially changing, uh, which isn't the best thing. You know, usually you have some kind of history with some board members that can carry things on, where you risk an entire replacement of everybody, and nobody really having any history when they come in. And it's very unusual. Most municipalities are always staggered, you know, a five-member board is usually staggered, two and three, a seven-member board like this, you know, three and four, so that you always have at least some experience there. So that's the language that should be on there. And I think you should be able to look it up on your county board of elections also on their website. It should be there.
And keep in mind, the size of the wards can change, the boundaries as populations shift.